Before we close the public hearing. There's a reason for that. Everybody here tonight get an opportunity to speak, to state a name and address, and we'll just go around the room where everybody wants to make it. What we do ask is that you go ahead and point all your questions to the commission, and not directly to the library or whatever, so we'll respond, and if we need to then we can ask for additional explanations for that. With that said, Paul, would you like to reintroduce?
Sure. An application for a conditional use permit has been submitted to the building department by Michael J. Mars, project manager of the GPD group, agent for the Cuyahoga County Building Library, to propose the construction of a new library on five existing lots which will be consolidated along South Green Road and Langardale Boulevard. The procedures for dealing with conditional uses are outlined in section 762.05 of the South Indian Planning and Zoning Code. Consistent with those procedural requirements, the planning commission, before making any decision, is obligated to hold a public hearing on the matter. The time and date for the original public hearing was scheduled for 7:00 PM, April 11th, 2013, at the South Indian Community Center. The notice of the hearing was mailed to the owners of all property within 200 feet of the subject site pursuant to the requirement of section 762.05b2. In this case, a total of 42 original notices were sent involving the appropriate properties on South Green Road, Greenway Road, Langardale Boulevard, and Tambores Drive. The public hearing Google News was published in the Sun newspapers on Thursday, March 21st, 2013, and Thursday, April 4th, 2013. And from the original posting prior to this meeting, notices were sent out to everybody that had the original mailing list, and in addition to that, anyone that had signed in on the April 11th public hearing meeting, they also received a notice telling them about tonight's continuation of the public hearing.
Thank you, Paul. Aaron is with us tonight from the GPD group to present, he's been working with Mike and the project all along, he has the final plan, so we can show us what the...
Would you please speak up?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name's Aaron Rotaboff. I'm from the GPD group, we're an architect, acting on behalf of the Cuyahoga County Public Library, here to present the plans of the library as we have put them together thus far. This is just a blown-up version of this. Green Road is right here, right here, but it is... We've worked for the past six months with the planning commission...
Can you speak a little louder, please?
Yes. We've worked for the past six months with the planning commission to try and put together and take care of most of the needs and the requests of the surrounding residents and the requests of the entities involved in the area. A couple of the main things we tried to do, we tried to comply with the local entities and the neighbors' requests. Some of the things we did to try and do that, we aligned the drive with the Notre Dame College Drive right across the way, so that the traffic along Green Road can be consolidated. We provided fences at the north and south of the site for the neighbors. There's a fence right here because there was some concern of people cutting through the site to get to the library. There's also a fence installed across here for the same type of reasons, they don't want the library people to be wandering into kind of the fences spots. We also included planning screens on the north end of the site and the south end of the site, along with a hedge on the east side of the site to try and shield some of the parking from the particular traffic as it drives by. We complied with the fire department's request to add two fire extinguishers on-site, and I'm not sure exactly where they are, but they were happy with them. We also tried to keep the scale and feel of a residential street, because that was another major request from a lot of the residents. We created a larger setback in front of the parking. From the right-of-way line to the parking is 45 feet, and then there's another 15 feet from the right-of-way line up to the edge of the road, so we have about 60 feet from the road back to the face of the parking lot, and I believe it's another 30 feet back to the front end of the building. As I mentioned before, we are going to maintain a hedge along Green Road that is kind of continued on other parts of Green Road to the south. We focused on saving as many of the bigger trees as possible in some of these areas of the site. A lot of you guys know that the site drops off significantly in the back, there's going to be some cleaning out of those trees, some of the less desirable ones, and you have to put some area to collect rainwater, but in most cases where we can save a tree, we're trying to do that. We also focused on the pedestrian aspect of it. We put a nice wide 10-foot sidewalk coming up to the building right here, bike racks for that, and we also paid attention to the lighting levels on the site, that's a city requirement, but we believe we try to keep those from being too bright and spilling over the neighbors' property. That's all I have.
Any questions or any commissioners? Or what's open up to me? It doesn't matter. Any mini-mimo, start on the side of the room. So state the name, again, name and address.
Kathy Schaefer, 1172 South Belvoir Boulevard. Many citizens in the building site area feel this is a precarious building site. Flooding problems, bioswale location, felling the trees, Brexville silt mown, and more issues lead us to request a secondary authority to approve and review the site, that being Cuyahoga County soil and water. This is the agency relentlessly stating that more building on green space, the more pressure on water sheds, et cetera. In lieu of recent rain incidents that flooded homes, especially downstream to our neighbors in Cleveland and South Euclid, this is an important matter. I have enclosed a citizen's request petition for Cuyahoga County soil and water analysis, also enclosed is a check sent to the city for $400 to pay for the soil analysis in full to Mayor Weelo, a generous offer to ensure 100% safety by an unbiased agency. So you need to know about this. And I'm going to give this to you, the petition and what was sent to the mayor. Thank you.
Next. Any comments?
Oh, can I say one more thing? It was also sent to the property owner, too. The generous offer.
Yeah, correct, to the library itself.
Yes.
Dennis Silverbeath. I live over in Greenway Road. My concern with the basins and the possibility of overflow and such, but for people here, one of the things you can do is go to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency site, where they explain about dry detention camps, which if you are a computer savvy, you can get to, and it will describe basically all these little work. But I have presented Paul with a list of my questions concerning the maintenance of these basins, who's going to maintain them, also what kind of landscaping would be around them, and those kinds of concerns. Once I get those answers, I will convey those to my fellow residents so that they know what is behind their house and how we'll feel comfortable with that. Other than that...
Further back over the section over there?
I was looking at that map there, there's a...
You do your name and address.
William Decapit, 13, 27 Meador Lane, Shaw, Euclid. On the map there, it showed there was a street supposed to be there, and it looks like you have an entrance going to the library from that, where all it is is woods and makeshift street. Are they going to paint that to, and then make an entrance there? The way it looks like they're going to make an entrance off of that big enough street...
There's a driveway that goes to the house.
Langardale.
Yes, that there's a house up there, and there is a driveway that comes off the parking lot that goes to that house, and that's it.
Now, that's coming up from Langardale?
No.
But they're just...
Where he's pointing, because that's...
This is the driveway that serves this house here.
Right, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, there was a street there that's supposed to, it has a name.
Those are paper streets, they don't exist, they're a paper street, so there is no actual vehicle access off of, what is it, Greenway? Or there's no access from Langardale to Green Road, there's no access, those are just paper streets.
Yeah, I know, but you know, where I lived, they said, "Oh, no, there's never going to be a house in my backyard, there's not enough room." Then they go and they built this house back there, there was not enough room, but all of a sudden there's room. Now they go to make a street there where they're going to get traffic, and just because it isn't there now, in a year or two, they might just do that.
Well, that would still have to go through all the proper zoning codes, you just, you know, of the city, if it's a big enough lot to be able to do that.
Well, keep it in mind.
Paul, could you...
They're vacating what should be Summit Drive, which is a platted street right now, it's called a paper street. Part of this project is to vacate the right-of-way, so that street on paper now goes away and just becomes part of the program.
And the other street off of Greenway, well, that's an easement on it because there's utilities that run up that other...
Yes.
Yeah, it will always stay the same way, the one up Greenway?
Yeah, that little stub, there's no intention at this time to change anything, it just remains as it is today.
Yeah, I notice it's a nice stump for some neighbors for compostable stuff.
Well, there will be a fence that is going to go all the way across where that is on Rosemary, there will be fence right there, so there actually won't be any access to it at all.
Yeah, that's up now, but two years down a lane, they say, "Okay, well, let's do
An easement, you can't build on an easement, though, that's the purpose of easement, you can't build any structure or anything like that on that.
That's what they said for my backyard, too.
Got it.
I would have never built there.
Got it, thank you. Anybody else back over on the side? Okay, we'll start off front, then we'll work our way back to what you did.
Victoria Khan, 1936, South Green Road, Shaw, Euclid. Really? So they are going to put fences, my understanding now, of length of property, the southern edge of the library property? Yes, okay. And do you remember what type of fence?
I did discuss with the architect, the vinyl coated chain link fence to kind of blend into the landscaping, and then, you know, as they had shown the landscape buffer with the addition of the spruce trees along the south property.
And what type of lengths go off in parking lot?
That's a question that we will be bringing up as well, the hours, like the actual hours of the time around.
Okay. Thank you for the fence.
Next, anybody second row, or...
William Decapit, 227 Meador Lane. I have never seen, whatever you call, oh, is the library going to be one story, two stories, three? What? I've never seen a drawing of it at all, I have no idea what the library is doing.
You, yeah, you want to respond?
It's going to be one-story.
Was it elevator, I hope?
No, not one-story.
No, it's two-story, I think.
No, it's a single-story.
No, the library is still under design right now, there's a lot of elements that have been brought in, trying to keep it classical, the same look and feel of the previous library.
Oh, Cap, next.
I have several questions.
Name, please.
George Martin, 1832, South Green Road, right at the corner of Green and Greenway. What is the parking capacity expected to be?
Currently, we have 132, 132 parking spots.
Okay. Are you going to give an ample number to handicap people by any chance?
Absolutely.
And what about, everybody's worried about runoff, somebody mentioned somewhere that you're going to have permeable surface, is that right?
I don't believe that any of our schemes have permeable surface.
So you're not going to have a permeable surface in the parking lot?
It'll be asphalt.
Okay, so Dennis is concerned about the runoff and things like that, retention basins you're going to have? Are they going to be in conjunction with the ones that are behind the green?
No, no, these detention basins are directly on-site and actually tie into the storm line on Langardale.
Okay, got it.
If you can show them right there, they're shaded in the dark green, are the detention point.
Oh, down at the bottom, okay.
Right there.
So that'll take care of 100-year rains that come on the roof of that building and the parking lot.
There's, correct.
My last question is, did you give attention to senior citizens' corner, you know, fireplace and place where we can drink our coffee and read the paper?
I believe there's two fireplaces right now.
Well, the city's got papers, too, there's four. That's very important for us. We've been waiting a long time for this $18 million return of our money, and I, my wife and I are past educators, this is going to be marvelous to have it so close to so many schools.
Yeah. And so far for Brooklyn?
And Memorial.
It's a big school, and Memorial.
I think he is, I'm...
Next.
I'm Jane Colwell, 4502 Liberty Road, and I'm worried about this project. I'm worried that it's not going to fit, and I'm not the only one. The city's community planning and design consultant calls Green Road an institutional corridor. The churches, medical centers, and schools says what's added needs to fit the character of the street. Notre Dame College has gothic towers and a deep setback, sanctuary and Green literally is the sanctuary. The library project will replace what looks like woods, and residents will be shot. The land will be cleared of the one-story, 30,000 square foot building, plus parking, I guess we're at 132 spaces now? It's the parking lot that'll be prominent, which concerns the consultants, suggested in the library reflect the layout of the former Regina Building. The planning commission is going to get the parking setback further, and our space is decreased, but when the architect takes these things back to the library, the library's got its own ideas. We can't go by the appearance of the building, as we just found out, because it isn't done yet, and the architectural review board alone judges it. All we can do is look at the footprint and consider where it would go. Footprint doesn't fit the neighborhood, not only that, but the footprint barely fits the property. It's a big chunk of land, but we also just found out not all of it's buildable. A good part of it slopes down to Langardale, so you have to squish the whole project of the flat part up front, the back end of the building against the homes on Greenway and the parking lot against the sanctuary, and it's really crowded. It might be a good location for a smaller library with less required parking, or a two-story building, but that's not what the library wants. What matters, though, is what the city wants. That's why planning commissions hold public hearings and cities hire design consultants. We as a city don't want to add something that will retract from what we have. If Green Road has a good vibe, and it's a good vibe, the city will want to keep it and enhance it. The library wants a new library, but the city gets to make the call. Is what the library's offering good enough? I'm worried about this project, I'm not sure it's going to fit.
Cap, next.
Linda Pagan, 684 Parkside Boulevard. Ditto to everything she said. One of my concerns is about the notification of this meeting. I understand you did not need to comply with a 14-day rule. I understand you met your legal requirements, but I think you violated the spirit of the law. There was no reason you could not notify the entire population last year's date in the sunstress, you had other public meetings and stuff notified. I think you have to start thinking about that. Second, there is an offer by the group that's, let's say, the Mansion Library Committee, they are willing to pay for an additional objective soil and water analysis. I just don't understand why either the library doesn't take advantage of it, or the city doesn't take advantage, it does not set a precedent saying someone else is paying for it and it's free and it's objective. Now, you say they met all the requirements, libraries met all its requirements, but Cutters Creek met all your requirements also and was a disaster once it started clearing the area. Furthermore, you said in the original meetings that the library might take responsibility if residents had a water problem a few years later, that the library would be responsible. You took that away, saying they met all the requirements. Again, I'm going to point out Cutters Creek. So this study would just be a little extra insurance for the residents, and I think they're in pipe. Three, screening. You're going to have screening, or I believe the open project was going to have screening, and I see mostly, I see screening where they haven't built, really nice screen by the former country, but what I see is bare land and wooden foot bushes, so my question is what kind of screening, what kind of bushes, and what kind of height? Or clearing the trees, I assume that's for the basin?
No, I'm not going to listen to that.
Oh, the mound, you're going to have some mound of dirt and grass?
I believe if we can get some mounding along the hedge area.
Will it be a few inches from topsoil before you put the grass, or is it just going to be clay with a layer of grass, which will be a lot more runoff?
I'm not the landscaping, I'm the architect.
But I think that's an issue in terms of runoff. And last point for the city, is this against your master plan? That piece of land is to go to buildings and bring tax revenues to the city. Just doesn't make any sense.
We have employees there, employees will be working. There'll be employees that have...
They're moving from another location in the same city.
Well, there's employees currently, yeah, at the current building, and that's...
Yeah, there's no net gain.
Oh, you answered the question on the screening.
The screening, well, there's a...
It's like the old, it's gone down to nothing.
That's through the landscape architect for the city. Again, that's not under the planning commission, we don't dictate what that is, that's why we have a landscape architect that actually looks at it to do that portion of it.
That's the architectural board, then?
Well, the ARB, that's correct, your ARB will look at it, and the landscape architect, which there is code in the book, then reviews this.
If that's all going to be there, what access does the public have to that committee, that commission? Is there a public hearing after that?
No, there's no public hearing after that. I mean, any contact, this is your public hearing now, but at any time, you could contact and get the name of who that is and ask a question of it as to what that is.
So there's going to be no public hearing when all these plans are done? There's going to be no public hearing to look at?
There really never is the process, this is the public hearing. This is what we do to go over, to review it. Again, the conditional use, and we'll move on, though, is that in code, if you look at what the code of the book is, and that's what we go by, is what this code is, and in the code, it is one of the permitted uses on any piece of land within the city that has a certain acreage requirement, which is why you have a library where it is right now. You can have a library where it's going right now, you could find another five-acre piece of parcel where they could go ahead and put through, put a request in for a library. Education, library, there's a whole list in the code book that is permitted within various districts as a conditional use process. So this is one of the uses that is actually in the code that they're allowed to do. What we're here trying to do is the commission's to put conditions on it to help make it fit to what they are allowed to do with that property.
You can vote no, you can vote no. Conditional use or not?
Dennis is correct. I am aware of what our responsibilities are on the planning commission, and I am aware of what our recommendations and what we can do.
Thank you. Yes, you can vote no, thank you.
You want to go, you're up front, you're going to make, name and...
My name is Judy Bagman, and I live on Corbin Road. I cannot understand, we got all this land right across from where I live, where they're building the Walmart and other, why couldn't a library have been put over there? That's, I mean, you might can't answer the question, but that's been my concern ever since they started working on the area. They started talking about the library, why couldn't they have put a library in that area? It would have been more convenient for the children, and as a former educator, I'm concerned about children, too. So I'm just concerned, why did they have to put, why couldn't it have been considered for that area?
And that's a question, again, we only get what plan is that comes before us, that's the library system, that's a county, it's a separate entity, and they've built these libraries all over. I have no control, it's my tax dollars, too, that have gone into what that is, and that's what their board or whatever has decided to do.
And I can answer part of that question, that neighborhood is in the Cleveland Heights University Ed School District, which has its own library district. So the county library would not be able to build in any part of South Euclid that is within the Cleveland Heights University Ed's library district, is my understanding.
Thank you.
Yes.
Cat Porter, 1823, not road. I was wondering what the, I mean, I see in the ground there are a lot of trees in the parking lot, and a lot of trees in the front, and I was wondering, I understand from this plan, there's a lot of, I can see that a lot of trees are going to have to be knocked down, but I'm wondering how many of the big trees will be able to remain, and how much, and how much, whatever you know about the landscaping situation that is planned there, is that, is that sketch of all the trees in the parking lot, is that, is that the way, is that the plan, is that the architectural plan, or not, or...
There are requirements in the parking code as to how many trees of green space has to be within that parking area. So those are trees that will be going back in.
And what does that require?
Offhand, I'd have to look that back up, but I can't remember. Paul, do you know what it is, offhand, what it is?
And they provide a 9%.
And what kind of trees, what size?
They have, well, I mean, I can show you after, they actually are ordinance, or landscaping ordinance dictates what type of trees can be used in those areas, and then they have to pick from that list, you know, and they have a whole list that they can choose from that goes into the interior landscaping and parking lot.
And what about any big trees, are any big trees going to be able to be preserved?
There are some up this edge of the site along the property line in the back, unfortunately, a lot of them in this area are, had to be moved into the building for parking lots.
Is the traffic going to be so heavy that you will have to put a light over there at the entrance?
Right now, the traffic study came back, it did not warrant a light at that location.
Thank you. My name's Fran Mench, and I live at 3060 Chelsea, and I respectfully ask the planning commission, this is in Cleveland Heights, I respectfully ask you to not vote on this tonight, because you will be voting on a plan, you have no architectural rendering, you have no specific answers regarding the landscaping that's going to be placed on that property, and you do not yet have the analysis by the Cuyahoga Soil and Water Conservation District, and the library has entered into that, into a contract with them to do a site analysis on at least four other locations, so I'm asking you... So I'm asking you not to vote on this tonight, but to wait until you actually have something, a plan to vote on. No building, no landscape architectural plans and no soil and water conservation district analysis. Thank you.
Anybody else have a note?
I have one question. How long would it take if we're going to keep on asking for more and more studies and things like that? We were supposed to have this started, if I remember correctly, and my wife pointed out, it was supposed to start last spring originally. So your guesstimation, how long do you think it'll take to get all of these requests and petitions and everything out of the way so that we can enjoy our library before we die?
How do you know they can enjoy it? You don't know what the building's going to look like. How do you know you're going to enjoy it?
Excuse me? To the commission? Yes. Everybody will have a chance to go and speak. The, the plans were submitted, the original application back in January, February, and it was just the initial process. We have been over these past four or five months, we have been going back and forth with the various city departments, with the engineering firm that's been retained by the city to review all these and there's been a back and forth with the library to do it to the point where now we have a set of plans to look at. So all those issues are being addressed back in there. So that has been the process for the last five months that's been reviewed.
Taking into account some of these legitimate, you know, questions that they have, have you got a guesstimation of how long it'll take for us to get to the point where we can?
Where they actually can start construction? Well, once this goes, our recommendations go through to council, then council has, oh, is it a hundred and twenty days from them receiving it, I believe? And they may or may not, if they want, hold a public hearing as well at the council level. We are required to hold at the planning commission level, council may hold one. So if you're interested in that, that's how you approach then your council people and talk to your council people persons to deal with that. So once it goes to them, then city council will look at it and they then both have a final vote on it. We are again a recommending body, so we are making recommendations and our findings to present to city council. Yeah, she had one counter.
Oh, I just wanted to mention about.
Name and.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pat Silsby on Greenway. I lived on Greenway for forty-one years, so I know the back where you're planning on doing this very well. And I was just concerned, has anybody thought about going back there and seeing some of the gorgeous trees? There are lilac bushes, there's weeping cherries from the previous owners, there's a gorgeous maple tree that must be probably maybe two hundred years old, there's gorgeous pine trees. I'm just wondering, before anybody just goes and destroys everything, have they actually looked personally on property to see what they might be able to salvage before they just destroy everything?
Yes, and the planning commission spent a couple hours walking the property as well, so we are.
To reemphasize, we did this in the rain, for two hours in the rain. In the rain, we put it easy, it just made the rain as an excuse to leave and not looking further. So I'm not trying to downplay what you're saying, but we took this very seriously. I ended up sick at the end of the day after standing in the rain, going through the bushes, looking at everything. So we did take this seriously. We did look through everything.
Oh, good. I would, I would. I would have come over and helped you. Look around.
Could have been a good idea.
Yes?
If the city council decides to have a public hearing, would that be after the architectural review? Would they at least have seen what they're agreeing to?
Let's see, what is the timing?
I mean, it really depends. They, they put their application in to appear in front of the architects review, which starting in September, so it's probably going to be running concurrently while city council does their notification.
There's, there's some confusion of what's going on here and you're imposing a lot of information that we're not, we're going to be looking at. Number one, all we're looking at is the site plan and that is typically the footprint. As far as the architectural rendering, that goes through the building phase and we have an architectural review board that addresses those concerns on that. The council is going to look at the conditions that we established here for the use of the library. The library is what we consider a special use. It's permitted not by right, but by public, you know, you have a public discourse and looking at it and so that, that use and the conditions that would be applied to it blend in to where it is being, where it's being located. They do have a right to exist, a library within the city. Right now, it's currently, tell her it is in a residential district. I think the minimum acreage is two acres, this one's five. And it's just a matter of establishing the conditions of use, which would be typically buffering. Traffic was a concern, the entrance to Notre Dame and lining up with Notre Dame was a huge concern. This planning commission can look at health, safety and welfare issues as defined, I believe by legal cases. So when you talk about safety, you're talking about traffic, you're talking about storm water management. We have city engineers that have, and we've done all these projects. You don't have flooding off projects that we've done that, that put in the detention bases. They function and it is, will be the applicant's responsibility to make sure it's maintained and functioned on those aspects. The other thing is, is that we have internal tra, internal circulations and we have code as far as the traffic out there, as far as parking spaces and parking spaces per the square footage. So it's, it's pretty, what we're looking at here is the site plan and that's a separate config, that's a separate process that we recommend to the building, the building commission. Conditions we establish would be probably something similar to that there's got to be buffering between the north and the southern property lines. That would be a condition that would run with that use. So at no point in time should a library come back and tell you to take down the fences because they don't want them anymore, they're not maintained. That's a condition for that use of that property. So that, that is what we're trying to establish here. Where we have the right to say no is if there is a safety, if there's an issue that impacts safety, health and welfare of the community, such as if the driveways weren't aligned with Notre Dame, within their own traffic report, they said that was a safety related problem and if they didn't fix it, that would be grounds. We rely on, for our denial, we rely on the experts to give us reports and we base, our decisions based upon those reports. Fire department, we have, you know, that's the expert on regarding fire. He's asking the movement of firefighters. We're looking, we had a traffic study that was done by professionals and they identified the problem and that's what took a long time to get resolved between the library and Notre Dame. And you also have storm water management, which went around, I think about three or four renditions of issues that this, that the engineer, engineering firm looked at and trained that and said to fix and then they, they came to agreements. Once those agreements came in there and said, this will work, we, we're pretty much finished with this process. You know, so I'm not trying to understand, I'm not trying to mitigate it. We're not looking at the architect. That's a whole separate process. We have landscaping ordinance that was just recently instituted for this very specific purpose, you know, so that we have gave guidance to the architectural review board, landscape architect, to what needs to be put into these processes. That there's pedestrian access and walkway superparting lines, bicycles that are accommodated within the sites of these things. But, you know, you see these, these are, you know, probably improvements that nobody really notices or takes notice, but this is the things that we've been, you know, that's what this process is about. And we listen to your concerns. You know, the issue.
The trees.
I don't mean to take up the public hearing, but the impervious ground that is there now to compare to what is being put in there, with my understanding, it's fairly equal. So if you take all the driveways of all the homes that are there and the houses, that's all impervious ground, that same volume of impervious ground is what you're seeing right there. And we're putting in, and those homes and those props don't have detention bases for those properties. So we're accommodating that on that property, that aspect or that concern. As far as, you know, there's, there could be mosquitoes, there's pellets for mosquitoes. They can put water pellets, I think there's mosquito pellets that you can put into water detention, into, into areas that will kill or murder.
They basically put them in the catch basins in the street where the water sits. Typically on most of the developments in South Euclid now, they have the detention basins, they're basically dry. So we don't, you know, they fill up after storm and then they.
Right. They be shut. So it's just a matter of, you know, putting that pellet in there. Now, as far as the soft water runoff, it's my understanding of this detention system requirements now, the water that ultimately goes into the system has got to be cleaner than.
Yeah, first the, the water gets collected into a four bay and then through a device and also some of the plantings around that four bay, it actually filters the water, then the filtered water goes into the detention basin and from there travels into the storm system.
That's answer to your question. And then on considerations of basin overflowing?
They, they have to design it to the hundred year storm, that's a requirement for EPA, so that's what these are designed to. You know, they have to cer, reach a certain benchmark that the Ohio EPA requires.
It's a hundred year. And then as far as periodic maintenance, that's the library's responsibility to.
It is the library's responsibility, but every year.
Which is a taxpayer.
The, the city engineer goes around and we inspect all the detention basins to make sure they are being maintained.
Okay, so we're, and then, and the matter of landscaping or design around the basin, I think one is going to be the fence, I believe, you know, that could be as a condition that there is some level of, that, one of those landscapes as far as the rear yard is concerned. And then the issue of safety that we'll, we'll look at on that. I, I hope that sort of explains the process, so the council's only going to be looking at the conditions, not the site plan.
They won't have to look at it if you vote no. You can vote it down.
Ma'am, please.
Thank you.
I will ask you to.
I'm just trying to explain the process to you. I'm not.
I want people to be aware of that. People should be aware of what this really, what really is going to go on here. It wouldn't go to council if you vote it down.
Yes, it would. That shows that you don't know what the process is, ma'am.
Okay.
Because we are a recommending body.
Okay.
We can vote to approve it with conditions, we can also vote to disprove it. It goes to council with our recommendations. Council is the one that has the final say as to what happens with this project.
What if you vote no? What happens?
Council has the final say to what happens with this project. That is our recommendation, they will take a look at our recommendation, council has the final vote as to what happens with the project.
Thank you.
Yes.
You say that the library had to pay for all of that?
Lady at the end in yellow, she was the first one to raise her hand. And the gentleman right there, the second, and the gentleman has their.
Got it, okay.
With regards to safety issues, have they thought about the deer problem? Because there's quite a few deer running around up there and running into traffic and quite a few deer.
There are deer everywhere. There were about four big bucks when I went up there and walked the property. That's correct, they are there, but that's not a factor that we look at unfortunately.
You say that the library is supposed to pay for all of that maintenance there? That's our tax dollars, right? Cuyahoga County's tax dollars? They're not paying it, our tax dollars are paying it.
That would be correct because there's a public body.
But they going to come to us for another tax thing?
Well, then you have a, as a citizen, like I do as a citizen, you have a choice of voting no and that comes back up and read no.
This will be the last, this will be the last time I vote yes for a library, I'll tell you that.
Yes.
They got money to waste when they could do it for five million. If they didn't say they could do it for five million, then I, then I wouldn't have a thing to say about it. But they said, we could do this for five million, but we're going to build this for twenty-one million. Don't make sense to me.
That's why as a citizen, when you write the vote, is unfortunately, that is the process.
Yeah.
Of how we do it.
My wife and I enjoy being on campus. We love student life. You mentioned something, Arthur, about bicycles and walking traffic and I'm almost thinking of all these kids going to college and back and forth all the time and then there's going to be the middle school and then there's the grade school and, and it's surrounded by schools. I'm just concerned with a lot of kids of different ages going to the library to use it for different reports or projects or whatever. I'm just concerned about safety, that's all. I can see that the volume of the student body, students walking and bicycling will increase and if you don't have, well, where we are, there's a traffic light right up the corner. That'll be, have to be heavily used because there'll be nothing else all over.
That's where they'll cross. That's one of my concerns.
I understand you have a limited group of things you look at legally. And I understand when you say they need all the requirements, Paul says that, you say that, but what happened in Cutters Creek, they had so much runoff, they had like thirty feet of bank a road and they had to put some kind of retaining wall that will always have to be watched carefully.
I think there was basement.
You know, sometimes not enough just to meet requirements, you know, something goes wrong.
There were no issues, there have been no issues today on coverage creed. There's been no issues today on coverage creed. It was designed, it was engineered, it was built the way it was designed and you have not had any issues today with any of the storm water management or coverage creed.
Something called a disaster when they cleared the land or a water problem disaster. It's not ignored that, which is sometimes people don't do what they should do.
There's been no issues.
No, no, my parents lived there, there's been nothing.
They fixed it, but it shouldn't have happened in the first place.
There was nothing to fix.
There was nothing to fix.
Go take a look.
My parents lived there, I have lived there.
There's a bank that a road.
First I've heard of it.
Yeah, I think I heard that there was basement flooding with homes around there, but I'll just.
My parents lived in a adjoining street, there was nothing.
Well, that's what I heard.
Their, their property, the speed, and the speed, Cutters Creek was behind their property and lived there for twenty years.
Okay, there was mention of reliance on experts. I really think we should rely on the experts and that's Cuyahoga County Soil and Water. I mean, you know.
I'm going to read a short blurb, this came from the Sugar Valley Engineering and the firm that was looking at the storm water and it's, per request, I reviewed my notes on the drainage systems for the post-site improvements for the Cuyahoga County Public Ladder Project in South Euclid and based on preliminary plans that were submitted, the storm water is being properly addressed and has been properly sized to address the increase in runoff due to construction activities. In addition, South Euclid, like many communities in the northeast Ohio, have adopted regulations and methodologies for managing storm water for new construction that were extremely restrictive. These restrictive regulations, when followed, ensure that no new construction will adversely affect adjacent or downstream property owners. This is what we rely on because I am not the expert in it and because South Euclid does go by the stricter ruling that is there and we retain our own engineering company, that again was the reason for not going to have the other source done of soil study. And again, it's not, so everybody's aware again on this, and this has been going on for months, we don't make the decision to have that done and that is the process we go by, what our engineering company is determined. We wrap up on your list.
Oh, wow, this is worthy of last, it's just more on the soil and water study. Couple things. One is that the, those folks aren't civil engineers, so they're not going to duplicate what Sugar Valley does nor what the architects, civil engineers do. They're soil scientists, which, which is a different aspect and, you know, we know that that's slanted, which is why it's all against the street, but we don't want to slide down the hill if there's soil slippage. The other thing, and it's just, it's just a detailed thing, is that council people have said no, you guys have said no, the library has said no. That letter from the citizens, I don't know if it's been to the mayor and I don't know if the mayor would say no, but that would exhaust all the branches of government and everybody could possibly be presented with that option because it's free, because the citizens pitched in. It seems to me that it's real frustrating that, that everybody said no when it's a cooperative project between the city and the citizens and the county library board and I just have to express that.
Has anybody contacted Cuyahoga County Library Board?
Has anybody contacted Cuyahoga County Library Board?
Yeah, you guys did. No, that's not-
No, that's not, I mean-
You asked Mike, you asked them.
Well, yeah, they, they were asked on it, they came back and said, right, that they didn't want to do it.
They said no, so did that work?
But I'm asking, have you contacted anybody else in the library or board, their library system?
Well, I kind of thought the architect asked-
Have you talked to the president of the board or other board members from the library?
I have done so.
Okay, that's, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking, has, have they been contacted with that, and how many people have you talked to, and all those people have said no, or given you a runaround, I understand-
It's like everybody said no for a variety of reasons, precedent, money, whatever, duplication, but it's, I think it's point oh oh six percent of the cost of the project, and, and, and now it, it becomes free, it, it wouldn't, it would seem to me it would make a lot of people feel better, and if, if they sign off on it too, then we all go, whoa, thank goodness, the water's not an issue, you know, then we just worry about the general welfare and the, the character of the road.
I'm just about to tell you what the soil condition is.
Yeah, but I, I think that'll help, give them a chunk plunk of, of big building on. You don't know that-
I already, I already know what the soil condition is, they've looked, they've looked at it by the civil, civil engineers.
Well, it just seems to me-
Go across the street to Notre Dame and see-
Pardon me?
So, soil there was the same, it's across the street to Notre Dame.
I don't know, soil in my yard is all open place, so I-
It's a shale and clay base.
I can't, there's some Brexville number or something, from what I understand.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hardly a closing comment, but it is extremely frustrating.
Um, Mr. Chair, if I could, thi- this issue with the, with the, um, stormwater management plan, um, I did receive an email that was provided to me, um, that was sent to Fran Mench regarding Cuyahoga Soil and Water District, and I'd just like to read for the record what they say. Please be advised that Cuyahoga SWCD does not do site analysis related to hydrology, while we can provide general assessments regarding soil type, soil compaction review, um, SWIP three for development sites. We do not model runoff and do not have the technical capacity to perform hydrological site analysis. And I, I can make that available to the public, but I just want you to know, I had conversations-
So in other words, when, probably when they do that, if the cities, other cities use them to do stuff, they probably still retain civil engineers when they look at it as well, then, as part of their review process is.
Yes, that's my understanding.
Right, which that's Sugar Valley Engineering then, because they adhere by the same standard.
Last one, go ahead.
I have a question about the number of, uh, parking spaces. Mr. Goddard mentioned that there are rules about minimums, if you could talk about what would be the minimum number of parking spaces required for that site?
It's the maximum that they allow, and based on currently what they have, they were allowed a hundred and sixty spaces, what was it called?
A hundred and sixty one spaces.
Hundred and sixty one is what they are permitted.
That was, that was the minimum.
Yeah, that's what they're permitted to put on there.
No, 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 that, that, that's the minimal amount of parking spaces that would be required for that site.
Yes.
That means they could put more if they wanted to, but they gave a hundred and sixty.
Yes, correct, yes.
But the code calls for, based upon building size, a hundred and sixty.
So-
In order for them to get a reduction, they have to get a variance, and that's what we're going to give them, to reduce it down to a hundred and thirty-two, because it is below what we require.
Why, why do they need that variance?
Because they're going below the minimum requirement, so they are required to put a hundred and sixty on that space, that's the minimum required based on the square footage of the building, pardon me?
No, I know, but why, what was the reason for it? What was the reason?
I'm not, I don't understand the question. For a reduction?
Right, they, the library could have put one hundred and sixty spaces there, but instead, you're per-
That's the minimum they have to put on.
Correct.
They have to put it there, we're saying, we want that number lower than what the minimum is required, so they will have to get a variance for it, we want it to go lower.
No, I understand, I appreciate that, I guess I'm asking, why was it reduced? Why was it from one sixty, one thirty-two? Did the library request that? Did, what, why did you request it if you did?
They came back, we asked them what the minimum amount, what would be the maximum on, they said a hundred and forty spaces is what they need for their anticipated programs in this facility, and based upon, then we, that's when they came back with the layout, and we looked at the layout, there was some criticism on, or critiques on the layout, and based upon that critiquing of the layout, it got reduced down to a hundred and thirty-two because based upon some residents' input, they wanted, and, and our city planners' input, they wanted a bunch more, larger setback from Green Road, and in doing that, we sort of reduced the parking spaces down there. We don't have the authority to give them, to grant them, to deviate from the code. If the code says a hundred and sixty, that's all we can deal with, they have to have us a hundred and sixty, but because this is a conditional use, a special use process, we have to grant them permission, because if they went before the Board of Zoning Appeals and got it without our permission, it sort of ties the hand of this whole conditional use process. So, from a technical standpoint, we have to negotiate and get them down to a hundred and thirty-two, and now we're going to write them a letter, a letter to the Board of Zoning Appeals, granting them, or granting them permission to seek the reduction from a hundred and sixty to a hundred and thirty-two, which is what, about fif- what, about thirteen percent, was it, a thirteen percent reduction? Fifteen percent? The maximum amount of reduction that they're allowed within the code is twenty-five percent. So they're getting, they're getting, so there's a compromise on that, based upon the site layout, and that, and once they go before and get the variance, with the variance in conditional use, that goes before council for the overall, their approval of conditional uses.
Let me say something positive. At the design meetings, the library tried to meet the needs and address the concerns of the citizens, and there were a number of residents that said they want this library to fit on their property and fit into the general look of the street. It is green road, there's a lot of greenery, we want more greenery between the street and the building and the parking lot, and that is why the library asked for the reduction.
I understand that-
They were in accord to what allowed the residents want, I heard about ten or twelve residents making the request.
My point is that if the-
They cannot just see a gigantic parking lot.
My point is that the planning commission should have said, "This does not fit on this space, the minimum number of required parking spaces is one hundred and sixty, the plan does not accommodate one hundred and sixty, therefore we reject your plan." They could have used that as, as a basis for rejection, that's the only thing I'm saying.
No.
No?
No, you can't use that, that's not, that's not a line of argument.
Why not?
Because you have, if there is an issue with the use, the applicant has the right, property rights, this is constitutionally protected, to mitigate the concern, and that's what they're doing, and we have to give them that opportunity to mitigate. Now, if they choose not to mitigate, then we have a, then, then we have, then we have legal grounds in which to make a different decision. But, uh, they have the right to, to address the concerns, and that's what they've done, and it's been a process, and we, and, and it boils down to compromises all along here, we've been trying very hard to, to understand the residential concerns of what they want with the library's property rights.
The library's public entity, a public entity.
They are a-
They are us, they are us.
They are a property owner and we're-
They are the public, they are us.
They are, we're talking, well, let's go to public hearing.
Yeah, I think, yeah, at this, at this point, yeah, the public hearing is closed. Thank you, everybody, for all your comments, and they will be duly noted and put into what we make then for our recommendation, which we are not, uh, we're, we're just not getting voted on tonight, we're taking all this information and input again and going back through the process.
There is one, who, who already, because I wanted to ask.
Who do you want to ask?
Yeah, I'd like to ask our, the city planner, Sarah, if you'd like to, would you like to make some comments regarding, yeah, that would be, I forgot, sorry, I would have done all this.
Well, correct, yeah, we are, just so, we were saying when we're reviewing this and putting the conditions, we'll be meeting again, uh, I think it's September twelfth at our next meeting, and at that meeting is when we will vote and have recommendations. Meantime, our conditions will be sent to the library to have also the review, so they come back on the meeting of the twelfth, that's when we'll sit and put all the conditions down and make our recommendations and vote on it as a commission, and send that then up to council. That'll be the rest of the process that goes on. But Sarah, our city planner, so she's been working with us as well on various issues with this.
Great, good evening. Um, I don't want to go too much over what you all have already presented to the public, but in my review of this revised plan, which was dated July sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen, I noted a few items that, um, I think have been positive progress on the applicant's behalf, or on the applicant's drive. First, um, as has been mentioned numerous times tonight, they increased the parking lot step back by roughly thirty feet, and also are including screening of the parking area. Um, our initial concern with the way that the, the site was designed was that the parking lot was far more prominent than the building, and that it would be the overriding, um, character and nature of the site that would be noticeable by vehicular traffic and by pedestrians that were going along South Green Road. Um, I feel that they have made positive steps in that the existing differential of about thirty feet between the building and the, um, front eastern edge of the parking lot, if the parking lot is properly screened as determined by the architectural review board, that it will not have a negative effect on the character of the South Green corridor. As a result of the changes in the step back of the parking lot, again, they have reduced the parking by eight spaces from the last time that I reviewed it. The hundred and thirty-two spaces is, um, what the library has noted is really their bottom tolerance or threshold for the amount of spaces on the site. So, as is proposed tonight, um, I think that the planning commission could feel comfortable recommending, um, for that variance if you do decide to recommend approval of the plan. Again, to note, um, another thing that the applicant has done is that to relocate the ingress and egress drive so that it lines up with Notre Dame College. We feel that that is extremely important, both for the safety of motorists and pedestrians, but also for the way that the, the, um, adjacent uses relate to one another, and, you know, not to, to hammer too much on the character of the site, although that is really my responsibility, um, we think that it's more appropriate and that, that you have more of a mirror image there, and that they relate to one another more appropriately. Also, um, as a result of the change in the parking lot, they are proposing in alignment with the Notre Dame access, um, they're proposing a landscape island in between the ingress and egress, just a small point for you to consider, and I, I included a draft diagram here, I think that it would be a lot, um, a lot more appropriate treatment on the western edge of the landscape island, rather than having the pain of striding to continue that landscape island. There's no reason to have the striding, it should also be landscaped. May I also though add the caveat that if the striding was a requirement by any of the other reviewing entities or code, obviously, um, that, that condition wouldn't be appropriate. Um, someone, I think, suggested that it may have been due to like a snow removal plan or something, so if it impedes any traffic as recommended by other boards, um, that would not be appropriate. So, a couple miscellaneous comments, one is, was already noted, the ten-foot, five-inch swag sidewalk, that's proposed to connect the library to the, um, South Green side, sidewalk, is appropriate, and we feel that it invites non-motorized travelers into the library, and, um, they have provided the seven bicycle parking spots as encouraged in mere code ordinances. And finally, um, you know, I, I understand that you received the traffic study, but I do think that down the road, should this project be approved and constructed, it would be, um, to the benefit of the area for the city and the library and the college to work together to advocate for the signalized pedestrian crossing, um, so that you can get res- residents, students safely over to the library and vice versa. So, those are my comments.
You, make your turn.
Paul, and they, they studied that for the traffic light, but based upon the traffic circuit is done. Now, is there not, no, is it, the state agency?
There's currently another traffic study being done right now, currently, for the signalization along Green Road, which may mean that there may be changes in what lights that are there now, and they may move them. One, so, year now, year or so from now, so by the time they even start construction,
So, the recommendation that there was no str- no signalization necessary was from this traffic study we collect, but another study, I don't know who's, the, the state of Ohio is doing this?
It's right now URS Consultants is working on the actual study.
But, may, that may change in whether or not a signal goes there, that's going to be a base for our new study.
Who would pay for the signal?
Would it be partly overall redesign if they, if the study from-
State.
It's just Monticello to proceed?
Yeah, it's, it, yeah, it's, it's an all encompassing study of Green Road, and it's my understanding that, you know, the, the funding would be state funds, and, and they're the ones who make the decision on where the signals go, not the city.
But who would pay for the installation, is what I meant?
The state.
The state.
Is that true, Keith?
It would be, it, it, it could be state funding, I, at this point, I don't think we know where the funding is coming from for that, we have to, we have received the money to do the study, we've been working on this for several years, uh, and hopefully the state will come through, um, as they've done in other cities for other state roads.
I would request the library pay for the installation of any traffic signals because they cost a hundred thousand dollars.
On the, on that curving back there for that entrance, is that, the reason of that, that would be curved, Paul, that would have to be a curve if you make that island any bigger, is that the issue maybe of the bound or something, if they would be able to?
I don't know, I don't know if they designed it, I'm not sure.
I just, I, I didn't have any of that, um, information on if another reviewing entity required, you know, maybe that island to be a little less narrow, and that's why they installed it. The recommendation is to have a curve, extend the curve to the side there.
Okay.
Pardon me?
We need to, is everybody on the commission, any agreement to, uh, send the letter then to the, grant the letter to the VZA regarding the parking requirement?
Yes.
To make motion, if we have a vote, all votes taken, to grant permission, say aye.
Aye.
Going from a hundred and forty to a hundred and thirty, from a hundred and six to a hundred and thirty-two?
That is correct.
Okay.
So that can get sent, Paul, I have that letter to you. And then that'll get forwarded to the library, I'll send a copy, so you'll actually get me.
I have a question for the architect, uh, where we requested the fencing, um, in the front, in the front, there's going to be a, um, parallel to Green Road fence in the back, see it? Where-
No, in the front of the building, that faces Green Road, fencing is going to go from the side, from the northern side.
Here?
Yes, right there, it'll be there, and then it's going to pick up at the back end there, and go, and go all, and traverse, uh, Westerland.
Until, until it hits the steep slope.
Right. The access to maintain property behind, right in there, yes, that, there's got to be some level of access for the gating, that's number one. Two, also addition, you know, are you planning screening, is that that green, that they have been planning?
These new darker ones right here?
Yes, yeah, those are for those new- So that, so that the neighbors, they're not going to get a fence, but they'll get the, the, um, they'll be blocking view, okay.
Will there be any additional landscaping for the homeowners that, where the fence is?
Going, going, you know, at the very back of the detention base?
Where the back of the detention base, yes. I don't know.
Okay.
And it isn't shown.
And also the, uh, screening around towards the detention basin, from the sightline view of those residents back there.
These residents?
Yeah, those one, two, three homes.
I don't know.
Okay? Those are just-
This, this is possibly, um, a solid fence rather than a chain link, and if, if there were a solid fence.
Okay.
I don't know, that, that might be the reason that we didn't show any screening.
But that would be something for either the landscape architect to address, uh, whether or not, that concern?
Yep.
That we can ask, within the condition that that, that screening be addressed by the landscape architect, landscape, thank you.
Please, the question.
The, I don't know, I don't know, I'm always happy.
Governor, do you have any comment on this? Basically on the conditions that we were talking about on there, the, I may not send that out, I'll send a copy back out when I, when I do them as well, I'll still have them all. And then you can respond to them. But basically in those conditions that what he's, or was talking is to put on where exactly the fence will be. And now we'll be, and we talked with Mike before about that, that that will be one of the conditions with actually describing where it is on the condition for it.
Make, will make the fencing and the screening a condition?
What has to be.
What, what has to be.
It has to be. You know, but the, but the issue that we struggled with before was making sure that regardless of the fencing, that there was an appropriate buffering. Landscaping around that, embedded, you know, which kind of fence, the height of the fence, all those issues.
Right.
As long as they're addressed, you're fine.
Well, that would, we would put the type of fencing with the, is in the domain of the ARB. So we can make sure that they have to agree. That, you know, make the condition that they approve that fencing. In other words, it's not, library's going to put up the fence, the type of fence is going to be the ARB's decision, not theirs.
And approve the stock. You know, not the fact that it will not be there, just the stock.
Same thing, you know, check your, the landscape. Can we get the hours?
Yes.
That was the other issue was. The actual.
Well, they're normally. Hours of operation.
Hours of operation. This is my.
Do you know, is it the same as what they have currently?
That is a good question.
I don't know if they plan on changing it.
I just don't know anything.
I can, I'll have to ask them. The only other question regarding the hours, do they accommodate in college? Did Notre Dame College students that come over here for finals typically, some, some of college libraries grow up to twenty-four hours? I don't believe so, but that is another question. Okay. Thank you.
And if it is the same, the weekend hours are only till five on Saturdays, so Sundays are close. And it hurts at some, at some points of the year. But I mean, it's not like the lights are beyond midnight. Yeah. It's a weekday.
Anything else, Paul, do you have anything else?
No. Some of these maps too, if you do want to look at some of these after, that we have with some elevation drawings wherever you're more involved, go over there and look at them. Pat, sit down, make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, meeting is adjourned.